Kate, how are you?
Mr., how are you?
Oh, great. What's going on out the big city hall?
Nothing much, pretty quiet so far.
Good. I like it, I like it. What are you doing for the holiday? You getting out of here?
No, I didn't really want to travel with my parents being like they are, so I was planning on just having a quiet Christmas in.
Laying low, as all of us are, I think.
Yeah. Are you guys gonna be able to go up to Crystal?
We went last weekend, this weekend we're here, and we'll go up for New Year's, so that was all weird, though. Just the like, the lines were totally bizarre, because you know, you've got a face mask, goggles, you're totally, I said, I'm garbed up more than I go into a COVID patient's room. And yet, you know, they have the signs about distancing, so normally go up four people to a chair, now it's like one person. So guess what the lines were like, you know?
Pretty long. Do they have snow on the ground yet?
Yeah, yep, yep. They had a couple inches on the ground up there, so they had regulars, real snow, plus man-made snow, so it was good.
Very good.
It was all good. Quick, yeah, I'll budget this week and see what's going on before. Of course, we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you're off Thursday, right? You guys are closed Thursday, right?
Close Thursday, Friday, and I may be taking off at least half a day or the full day on the Wednesday. And then next week, we are closed, that Friday.
Okay.
So, but they kind of dovetails with you going up north.
Yeah, oh yeah, some, and you guys are closed 31st, right? Aren't you guys closed New Christmas Eve, or is that?
No.
That's someone for the staff that have that.
Right, just Christmas Day, or New Year's Day.
Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Hello, George.
Hey, Scott.
Test.
Good evening.
Test.
Testing, I hear you.
All right, thank you.
Got it. And then Kate, I've got a no on Joe.
Okay.
No on, um, who else call?
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
Kate?
Yes.
This is Steve. How come it says up on top, it's always recording? Is that, is that normal?
Yeah, that's how we record it, and that's how we put it on the city's online meeting page afterwards.
Okay, thanks.
Just doing a sound check.
Sound check from Kim.
Who's gonna sing the Christmas carols tonight? For everybody to jump up at once.
I say you start.
Oh, oh, there's Batisha. Man, I was hoping it would be you. I think you can actually sing. I'm not allowed to sing or dance.
That's pretty bad.
I know. I'm kept at home for those very reasons.
Mayor, I know Joe had just called me just about five minutes ago to see if he can jump on. I'm not sure if his connection will be stable enough, but we'll give him a try.
Okay. That works.
Looks like Gail's here.
Testing mic, test.
How you doing, Chris?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Joe, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
I think we got everybody else here almost. Are we, are we go at seven, everybody?
Cannot connect to App Store anywhere.
See, I'm on the phone now, I'm not on.
Joe, we hear you.
Yep.
Kate, I can see you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep, you're good. All right, everybody, if we're all here, let's call this tomorrow, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, December the 21st, 2020, the last meeting of this fantastic year. I would like to call this meeting to order, and if we could begin with the roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold. Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper. Here. Batisha Wilkins.
Yeah.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. I can get a motion to excuse Jeff.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jeff Arnold, this is Steve Schleck.
George Sleeper, a second.
Motion and a second to excuse Mr. Jeff Arnold, if we can get a roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper. Yes. Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to the approval of the agenda. Like, just get a motion.
Steve Schleck, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
This is Joe Reeser, I'll second it.
Motion is second to approve the agenda, is there any discussion or changes? Seeing none, this will be a roll call.
Reeser. Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper. Yes. Wilkins.
Yes.
Campbell. Campbell.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Next, we will receive an update from our county commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson Gladney. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening. I just wanted to inform you about some information from the Van Buren County Cass District Health Department, and as of the 17th, these are the figures that I had gotten, that we have confirmed cases of 3,647 for Van Buren County, and for the deaths is 68. Oh, just a second. Sorry. Okay, and the numbers are slightly down, that's a good thing from in the past, but we're still far above the numbers that were from this summer. And as you might know, there are two vaccines that are out, and it looks like the Van Buren Cass District Health Department, we're going to be getting the Moderna vaccine, and there are three different websites that our residents can go on and check to see what's going on with the vaccines and other information also. I can send those to you unless you already have that, Mayor. Smith?
And you can send it along, we'll share.
Instead of reading them off, and I'll send those to.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and then the last thing is that the vaccines will be given out in phases, as many of you already know. And also on that side, it says the best treatment for this COVID-19 pandemic, the best treatment is prevention so far. And so, as of now, since we don't have, everyone's not vaccinated, we, the health department continues to encourage everyone to avoid exposure and practice the three W's: wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance. And that's all I have for you, except for, I hope that everyone has a safe and healthy and wonderful new year and Christmas.
You as well, thanks, Gail.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda items A through H.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H.
This is Joe Reeser, I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, this will be a roll call.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper. Yes. Wilkins.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to new business. City Council, we asked to approve the proposed South Beach final consensus plan is developed by Edgewater Resources and recommended by the City Parks Commission. And seeing as it's quiet right now, Kate, why don't we do this? Do you want to explain to folks what we're really doing here as far as where we're at, is that we're not approving a true design, that we're just, I mean, we're very early still conceptually, just want to share that so we can understand what we're approving.
Absolutely, absolutely. So what we're looking at here today is this, this conceptual plan. So what we, what we have done here is we've reached out to the local, you know, our citizenry, our public, and gotten feedback, and, and in helping to design what could be the future of the South Beach, South Beach bathroom restroom area. And this is what has come up through about 127 people, filling out surveys, contacting the focus group, and helping guide people, guide the, guide the, the design here. And like the mayor said, this is not a design, meaning that we're ready to go see a builder, but this is a conceptual plan, so when we start looking for grant dollars, we have an idea in mind as to what we're looking to have funded. And well, obviously, as we can see on here, there's a number of things here, but what you can see is expanded bathroom facilities, expanded changing room areas, as well as like a plaza-like atmosphere for more seating and more accessibility. And this is the plan here from your packet, and this is page of 111 of 208, there were some more, here are some more idealized looks of it, but again, this is a conceptual plan to help focus our efforts when we go to look for grant funding, and what ultimately comes out of this is that this is not at all what's going to be the final finished product, but this is what we heard back from the public, and this is what guided the concept plan, and then ultimately, what we're looking at is increased bathroom capacity, increased the ability to offer concessions, because we all know how busy people are down there looking for a hot dog, looking for something to drink, changing rooms, shade areas, because it would need some substantial shade, and some historical background as to where these concepts came from. And then most importantly, what comes out of all of this is that there's a, an idealized, how much money is this going to cost, and that helps us fund, that helps us plan for how much fund would be needed, as well as when we go to seek, seek grants, how much matching funds would we need, plus, you know, if we're looking at a 50% match or anything further than that, so this gives us an idea as to what it's going to cost and what it's going to take, and like I said, just a concept.
Okay, that's very helpful, because I know there's, I mean, there will be questions, everything from accessibility, that was discussed at the Parks Commission, I know there are, there'll be questions as far as the size of the concession area, and I mean, we're not trying to create a fine dining establishment down on the water down there, this is, you know, as Kate said, you know, hot dogs and, and a water. We clearly don't want to be creating a situation where having a whole lot of competition with our downtown merchants for merchandise and whatnot, so this, again, relatively small concession and vending space, the biggest improvement will be bathrooms, shaded spaces, places to wash your feet off, drinking fountains, all that stuff. So if that's helpful, again, this case- So, if that's helpful, again, as Kate said, this is really conceptual, so we can ask for grant dollars, and from there, then we get serious.
Mayor, one more thing, uh, for the public, the, the viewing public, if you're watching via the Zoom link, there's a little icon on the bottom to raise your hand if you have a comment. And if you're dialing in from your phone, press star nine to raise your hand via that way, if you have comments.
All right, well, I'll still wait and see if I got any interest on the council side to make a motion, and then we'll see if we got any public.
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion. Um, I do have some reservations, but I think for conceptual stuff, we need it. Um, I'll make a motion for the proposed South Beach Final, uh, Consensus Plan as developed by Edgewater Resources and recommended by the City Parks Commission.
Perfect, thank you. I'll wait for your comments, because you have good knowledge of what goes on on the beach, so I have a motion, any seconds?
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and as Kate mentioned, public comment, so I'm looking out there, Kate, do you see any public comments before?
No, sir, I don't see anyone's hand raised.
Okay. Council comments.
Uh, I have some. Um, so the biggest thing I would bring up, and this is, uh, just a, a concept. The, the square footage is quite large, and I, I just want to make sure the city's not, you know, getting into the, into competing with, uh, our downtown businesses. Based on, you know, that, that size, and I understand the concessions is going to need some, but we want to make sure people understand it's not a full restaurant. It's not like your place, you're going to have a full lunch. Um, and, and obviously, things for sale there are more like beach, uh, accessories, essentials, I guess, um, but obviously, as a downtown merchant too, I don't want to find myself competing with the city. That's all I have.
It's very, very good points, and I would agree, we've seen that happen with our, you know, the market and whatnot, where we, we clearly do not want to be competing with the very people that are helping fund this, you know, concept, so I would agree with you 100%. And that could be another discussion for another day as far as what items were there, they could house down there, but again, it's early, but good comments. Anything else?
Steve Schleck, I'll make a comment.
Yes, sir.
As far as the competing against the city, um, I think the more the merrier. I've been competing against the city for several years with their slips and their marina. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think just like Chris said, I think it's, it's not an area where you're going to go for fine dining or anything, but I do think there needs to be shady areas and things of that nature, so I don't necessarily think that competition is bad, but yes, the government has uh, advantages that the private business owner does not. Um, so I will agree to a certain point of that, but I don't think competition is all a bad thing. Um, but I do think they need shady areas like was on the conceptual drawing. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just jump in here real quick, I just want to thank the Parks Commission for their time they spent on this, as well as the folks from Edgewater for creating this up to this point. If there's no other comments, we have a motion, we have a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yeah.
Smith.
Yes. Next item, City Council be asked to consider approval of an agreement with Rod E. Clark, or sorry, sorry. My eyes are going bad here, it's called bedlight. Ready charging, oh, sorry, to install electric charging stations, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
This is, uh, George Sleeper. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with ready charging to install an electric charging station and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
This is Joe Reeser, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Kate, and we'll get some public comment, and then circle back to City Council.
All right, sounds good, sir. And once more, if you're looking to make a comment, there's an icon on the bottom that says raise your hand or dial star nine. And just to kind of give a quick and dirty on ready charging, uh, this would be installed at no cost to the city, and we're looking at two, two, uh, EV stations, which would have two parking space per, uh, charging station, so a total of four parking spaces that would be dedicated to this, uh, to use this, uh, a person wa- wishing to charge up their electronic vehicle would put in their credit card, and it would be charged by ready charging. They would be charged a number of kilowatt hours that would be paid ultimately back to the city by ready charge, and at the end of the month, I believe there is a cost sharing, revenue sharing that would be sent to the, uh, city once a month. And, uh, to speak more about this, I'm going to ask Bill Hunter to unmute and kind of give any, uh, give some more details on that, as well as answer any of council questions. Bill?
Thank you, Kate. Um, this is actually led by the state, the state says to the Charge Up Michigan program. Uh, the state is, uh, really committed to increasing the, uh, the electric vehicle charging stations throughout the state of Michigan. A lot of this money is actually coming from a settlement, actually Volkswagen Diesel, at least $9.7 million of it. Um, they are, I was approached actually by EV through a consultant about installing, uh, one station, and of course, I asked for two, because I thought maybe if we could get two on this side, and then we do have, uh, future, uh, um, CMAC money for charging stations, and I'd hope to get two on the north side of Phoenix, so we could have like four altogether. Um, as Kate mentioned, there's a revenue sharing, so on the 10th of each month, uh, we, the city gets three cents back. So we're not only, we're not only, uh, selling them the power as we would actually any, any, anybody, uh, we're getting three cents back. So I'm here to answer any questions the city council may have on these charging stations.
Oh, got some. Steve Schleck, I have a question. So with the revenue sharing, they're going to install, they're going to blunt all the costs for installing these charging stations, and they're going to charge, and it'll go through their meter, and we saw it to them, and then we get three cents back, but there's no other expense to the city?
No other expense to the city.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good question. And then Bill, I know we were talking about locations, have we finalized, or that's still to be determined?
The, the locations are actually right in the agreement, uh, on here on, uh.
Perfect. Making sure they were solid.
Yes, we tried to pick a spot, actually, that was close proximity to transformers, so it'd be actually easier to run, uh, services to them.
Perfect, all right, I know that's what we discussed, so good, very good. That would be my only confirmation. Hello, George.
Hey, uh, Bill, is, do you know anything, I don't know that much about electric charging stations, but I'm assuming that these stations would be able to charge any kind of electric vehicle, or are they somewhat, somewhat limited in the kind of vehicles they might be able to charge?
Uh, my understanding is they can charge any, any type of, uh, electric vehicles. I know, actually, I think the odd one isn't that the Tesla, but usually the Teslas come with their own adapter. So that was my understanding, is it'll be universal. There might be some adapters actually, like, like Tesla, that they have to adapt to it.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? And was that Gail's got a, I think Gail's waving, now she's waving, or give me a thumbs up.
I think Gail has a question.
Is it time for a public comment?
Um, yeah, go ahead, that's fine, let's kick off public comment.
Oh, okay. Uh, I just wanted, uh, commend you all for doing this. I, back when I was on city council, I know, uh, we were looking into, uh, the charging stations, and so I think this is great. Uh, the city, I don't know if you remember, uh, there was a electric vehicle, uh, uh, conference sort of here, under the pavilion, I do, any of you remember that? And, uh, so I, I think that there's a, a demand for the, uh, charging station, so that's great. I'd like to ask, uh, Bill Hunter, are these the quick charge, the really, the ones that are, do you know the speed on those?
Um, I know these are the, um, the, the, they are the quick charge type, yes. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be the long one like you would actually, if you had to plug into a 110, so this will be like a 220. Um, it'll be a faster charge. I still think it's maybe an hour and a half or two. Barry's actually, I think, depending on the, uh, how, how much you need to charge your vehicle coming in. One of the things I, I thought of is, is with all these increase, um, talking to the gentleman, the, the CEO of this, uh, where he was explaining, there's a lot of apps now that people, people, when they buy electric car, they're constantly looking to see new places to charge. And what I thought, this is an opportunity to where it's now people traveling, since there's more and more of these vehicles out, will be on the map, so to speak, or drawing people actually to the downtown, because my thought was if there are traveling and more of them, they're going to be passing by South Haven, and why not, uh, come in and go further into town? Because there were some municipalities that were going right outside of the exits. I mean, you, you might probably have already seen them, when you go off an exit, and you'll see a line of chargers. I thought moving them into the town was more beneficial, especially to our downtown, so. But yes, these are the, the charger, but I believe it's, it's depending on how low your vehicle is, Gail.
Okay, uh, thank you.
All right, thanks, Gail. Any other public comments?
No public comment right now. Again, to the public, if you'd like to make a comment, click the raise your hand icon on the bottom, or dial star nine if you're on a telephone. So far, no one has selected to make a comment, sir.
All right, well, if there's no other council comments, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with ready charging to install a few, uh, charging stations. Roll call, please.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yeah.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Next item, City Council be asked to consider approval of a proposal from Aspen Wireless for a broadband feasibility study in the amount of 32,000, authorizing staff to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Steve Schleck, I, I would make a motion to table this and see if there's any interest in the, uh, surrounding townships to share in this, and, uh, to relook at the history of the broadband in town that we have, and, and see if anybody wants to share in this expense of the proposal.
All right, well, we got a motion to table.
I'll make a second on that, Chris Campbell.
All right, I have a motion and a second to table, which, which we can discuss that now at this time. I would be in agreement for several of the same thoughts you've got, so, um, I guess I will throw it out to the rest of the group for some quick discussion, and then we'll table it till a future date.
Steve Schleck here, I just, I know, uh, I'm wondering what our marinas are powered by now as far as, uh, the broadband, uh, maybe Kate can help me out here, but I know they have the wireless, and I believe they have broadband as well, and if we look at that, I, I don't know as if the city of South Haven really needs that. In addition to that, I don't know, and that's, that's why I'd like a little bit more information, so thank you.
Okay. Um, we do, we only offer, uh, Wi-Fi to our municipal voters. Uh, we have the municipal buildings, I believe, are out of broadband network, but because of security reasons, that's not open to the, to the voters. Um, we've had issues with, uh, running up against some limits with Wi-Fi with all the devices that folks have had on the, um, on the network, so um, we are looking at putting more point-to-point contact, uh, out there. But, uh, I understand that the council's concerns about this, and we can go and talk to the neighboring townships and/or the LDFA and/or, um, anybody else to see if there's interest in this, and we can also look at our existing Wi-Fi slash broadband and see if we can plug those gaps and come back to the council with, uh, some more information.
Sounds good, thanks, Kate. Um, any other council comments before we get a vote? Hey, George.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I just, uh, remember the meeting at the Board of Public Utilities where we talked about this, and the, at the Board of Public Utilities, we did not approve this agreement. I think we were waiting to see, get some more information first, so another reason I think that I'm in favor of tabling this is, is that we could give the Board of Public Utilities another chance to look at this and make sure their concerns are addressed based on, uh, the information we have so far.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, I would agree, I think the BPU's decision, and as Steve pointed out, uh, some cooperation with our neighboring townships, given the fact that this will ultimately impact them as well, would be very beneficial, I think, for us to understand, so I think that would be good. If there are any other comments from council, I'll take them now, if not, motion is to table, and we can just roll call it.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yeah.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Which takes us now to the fun part of the agenda. Uh, we're going to receive a report summarizing the actions of various city departments during what has been a most interesting 2020 calendar year. So Kate, I will turn it off over to you for introductions and walk us through.
Okay, sir, sounds good. Let me go ahead and, um, get this started here. So what we had here this year was a very interesting 2020 year. Um, we started off with our first fiscal year priority, of which is to study and manage the high water levels in Black River Lake, Michigan. As you can tell, we had quite a bit of challenge that we were faced with early this year, um, with, uh, the flooding here at the north side marina, flooding here at the south side marina, um, our riverfront park being decimated by water damage. Uh, more water damage again at water, um, our riverfront park and south side marina, as well as, uh, neighboring marinas here at All Seasons Marine, which really prompted us to take a hard and fast look at what we're doing to protect our critical infrastructure. So as you can see, we, we installed the Husco barriers over this, this spring. Um, and we also started our planning effort with our, our partners to the north and the south with, uh, Casco Township and South Haven Charter Township. Uh, we are, we are in, well, we've just completed, uh, the second workshop for planning for resilient coastal communities, so we are addressing the, the challenges that we are faced with right now, as well as begun our planning efforts for planning for the future, so that we can address these as we are going down the road, so a two-factored response. And just to let everyone know, uh, the coastal zone management, we actually received a grant from the Coastal Zone Management Fund, and, uh, that covered half the planning exercise, then the three communities split the cost of the community match. So that was another way that we were finding, I mean, commonality there.
Lynn?
What?
You're packing.
Another thing we did was we also reached out to our state and federal partners to, uh, look for what else, what other help is out there. We met, obviously, with Congressman Upton and Senator Stabenow. We had a very good roundtable discussion led by Mayor Smith to really kind of get in touch with those, um, opportunities at the, at those levels. Uh, because of our meeting with Senators Stabenow, we were actually really connected, uh, quite quickly with, uh, the Corps of Engineers and got those Husco barriers deployed quite rapidly. Uh, as we go into our missing middle workforce housing priorities number, priority number two, we've gone, uh, quite a ways down on our Overton, um, redevelopment. Uh, we are looking, we, we did the RFQ, we, we formed the evaluation committee, which we evaluated all three proposals. Habitat Company LLC was recommended as a preferred developer, and we've signed the due, the due diligence agreement, so they can do their part to find out if this is a good deal for them, and uh, we are doing our part to make sure this is a good, um, deal for the city. Where they're at right now, they're evaluating, uh, Kim, I'm sorry, the, um, the brownfield or any kind of environmental concerns as we get through this holiday season. They have said they are looking to do a. They have said they are looking to do a, um, a public kickoff here after the, the first of the year, since this is a rough time to try to get meetings together. So look for a public kickoff from the Habitat Company, um, after the first of the year. Going on to priorities number three, which is economic development efforts. Uh, site visits with local businesses have been limited due to COVID-19, but, uh, we've been able to get a couple more in at the, the, the tail end of this year. Um, just connecting with our, um, our business community to make sure we are doing everything that we can. Uh, we had the one-year contract approved with Jim Hettinger to provide economic development services. Uh, that was just renewed for another six months, but that is in your budget. Uh, staff and Jim Hettinger continue to work on goals of our adopted 2020 economic strategic plan. Now, we did have the feasibility on here, but we'll come back to that. Of course, that's one of your goals is to look at how we can expand broadband in the greater community area. But we'll come back with more information, so we'll just put that one on hold. We also looked into the CARES Act, the EDA CARES Act and US agricultural grants, uh, for rural development. We had found some funding opportunities through, through USDA. Uh, the CARES Act, after we put in quite a bit of time, um, on the water system improvements, we were eventually told by EDA that this didn't meet the criteria, so we stopped going any further on that one. That was a bit of a disappointment, but at the same time, we, we learned a lot about that process. Here for priority number four, we're looking at the Maritime District Maintenance and Improvements. Uh, we have continued to work with any and all comers who are interested in the All Seasons Marina redevelopment area, um, that continues to stay on the market, so we are still concerned and, and care about what happens with that. All Seasons Marina, as we went through that, um, that guided session for our first grant application, the public was very, very adamant that, say, working Marina, so we'll work our, to our best ability to make sure that happens. 1.5 million in grant funding to address phases one and two of the emergency repairs in North Side Marina. So as you remember, we received 1.5 million in grant funding for an overall project the cost of $3 million that was wrapped up. Uh, phases one and two A were wrapped up earlier this year. Uh, new electrical plumbing decking and stall at a height of 13 inches above where we were. All the existing, all the utilities are now underneath the decking and out of the water. New utility pub, new utility posts, new utility, um, electric conduit, everything you can see, imagine this, uh, small conduit here on the left-hand side. It's about $20 a foot. So that was quite costly, but again, as you can see, it's all wrapped up inside and you're not going to see splicing and things that would cause, uh, electric shock therapy. New pedestals and obviously new junction boxes here. Well, with the, with the, this actually shows your, um, your, your flipping devices, I'm sorry, the, uh, this is the
Circuit breakers?
Thank you very much, George. This trip flipping there, thank you. Thank you. Um, new substations here, and again, this is what you'd see if you took off the decking. The picture on the right shows all of your conduit there, all your water lines and of course those miles of conduit. Uh, I'm sorry, those miles of cabling. Um, we also were able to add a manual standpipe and so adding some fire protection onto those, uh, new onto those docks that weren't there. So bringing that up to fire code as well and also finishing the remaining sections of the retaining wall here. We also were able to, uh, we had already budgeted in the previous year to get a new office for Black River Park. Many of you may remember, it was about a 30-year-old, um, garden shed that had been out there. So we got this larger building that would actually house a lot of our tools and things that we needed to maintain the docks. Um, but as soon as we got that down there, we realized that it was going to be underwater, so we raised it. And by raising it, then we had to had, then we had to make it ADA accessible. So these were the things we had to do to make sure that office was functional and we're hoping to have that online by next year. Other things we also did was we had this, uh, this walkway fall into the, the water here. So we had to get a new walkway so that we could use these docks, uh, when the water levels, uh, were appropriate. And of course, when COVID allowed us, COVID restrictions allowed us to open the marinas. This was us also putting out some more additional protections here. As you can see that the water levels were just so high, it was, uh, very difficult for us to, uh, maintain that shoreline. Uh, one thing they were also able to do was with a, in a grant with the coastal zone management, we were able to put in a new ADA accessible dinghy dock at the Dyckman Bridge. This would be from the west side on the north side of the bridge, a new ramp with a new L-shaped dinghy dock that allows for people of limited mobility to have a, a room down, route, room down here to access this area. This adds one more point along the, uh, the water trail to access and move around using dinghies or water taxis, should we ever have any. Fiscal year priority number five, we're looking at the Business District Improvements. As you know, many of you are there for our, um, opening of the Center Street Reconstruction. Uh, this was helped, helped by the hail building redevelopment in progress. And we were able to relocate a lot of those water and sewer lines into the middle of the street. It also had quite a bit of, uh, installation of art and the live, the live wall down there, as you can see, as well as with one of the new, um, art pieces. Uh, we had quite a bit of new public art placed in the downtown this year. Many of this is on Center Street, but this is also over on Phoenix Street. Not to mention the, um, the installation of that wonderful mural that was done by Pat, Project Pathways. Um, as you, many of you may know, this is done in, uh, in honor of the 2020 graduates. Each of these birds is meant to, um, to represent one of those graduates. Uh, again, this is Project Pathways and this is actually on the side of Chemical Bank, even though this is right next to the library, I'm sorry, library, this is right next to the movie theater. This is the Chemical Lake Wall. It turned out really fantastic and it went up in about, uh, a period of one to, one to two weeks. Fiscal priority number six, the community recreation fields. The school is going to be coming to the, the council and as well as many of the public to talk about a bond renewal. And I don't want to, um, uh, waste their thunder, but just know that's coming our way. And, uh, I think that they are looking at other things, not just athletic fields, but, uh, bond renewal for other, for other items that address items at every school. Also, we are looking at the South Haven Area Recreation Authority was just awarded $300,000 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which would go towards first phase of the 14th Avenue Recreation Park. Phase one will include site preparation, a gravel parking lot, detention pond, access and pathways as well as the development of three soccer playing fields. Priority number seven, we are looking at parks and public spaces and recreation. Splash tab was, was constructed on South Beach and it was, we were all very happy to see that get done. We also looked at the M and RTF Acquisition Grant, uh, award of $2.62 million to Chara, which was the purchase of Royal, Royal Importer Property. Um, that helped fund a 47-acre addition to the Pilgrim Haven Natural Area and would help additionally add 1,000 feet of Lake Michigan coastline and help protect critical domes. Uh, the grant application for the Monroe Bluff improvements did not score high enough, but we will continue to keep going forward and see what we can do for that. Again, that must, similar to the South Beach Conceptual Plan, we, we put together a, um, a plan and got a lot of public input, so we had a concept, so we can go after grant funding. Those Monroe Bluff improvements, we'll keep trying and see if we can get a grant to hit later on. And we come here to public roads and infrastructure, which, which we covered last, or last city council meeting. So we won't go over, um, priority number nine, but just know that we'll be continuing to make sure that we're hitting our priorities with that. Fiscal year priorities number 10, customer service and communication improvements. Here, we saw, uh, an uptick, obviously with our phone calls, with our payments. As we come into the October area, but, um, we're seeing, um, we're delivering the same amount of service, whether we have reduced hours or whether we're in COVID, we're able to maintain that level of service. And these are the kind of requests that we get, our work orders, permit types, new accounts. And these are the number of customer service transactions that we have. Uh, as you can see, we did take a dip down in March, April, May, as that was when we had the shutdown and no one was able to work. We had, uh, the stay-at-home orders, but as you can see, it's been rising since that time with a peak in October and kind of slowing down into November. On average, there's about 6,700 customer transactions per month. And these are external customers, not including any internal requests. And on average, there's about 335 customer transactions per day. And on average, each customer representative completes about 112 transactions daily. So every 15 minutes, each customer service representative, uh, completes about 3.5 transactions. Um, just going, going forward on, on number 10, we had, uh, obviously implemented our safety, our COVID safety, um, measures. Uh, we had the stand here six foot apart, uh, requiring social distancing, wearing your masks. Also this year, we, uh, the DDA, uh, spraying for these, um, hand washing station in the downtown to help, you know, get us, you know, a culture of safety um, and health and safety, so we could keep our businesses open. We also had mandatory staff training on COVID-19 that was required, uh, from, from the health department. And also we had, um, mandatory training on microaggressions, so we can, continuing to do our customer service training and getting a well-rounded workforce. We also wanted to make sure that we were listening to our, our constituents and the residents and taking part in things that matter. So as you can see here, we have the staff participation of Black Lives Matter, myself, Kim Wise, Chief Thompson. Uh, I know many of the council members, George Sleeper were there. I believe I saw the mayor and of course, the mayor was there giving his speech. So again, taking part and being part of the community is one. Um, more training that was done, uh, we had the police training on de-escalation and their intervention and force mitigation. A police chief has been very, uh, very involved in attending the Ward One meetings. She's been answering a number of questions, so she's been there quite a bit. A leadership team attended ableism training as, as provided by disability network. Again, keeping that ongoing rolling of, uh, training going forward. We typically have an annual leadership retreat, um, at the end of the year to kind of address any things. Try to do some really focused trainings. However, with COVID, we did not want to have any of that. Or as COVID, we're, COVID cases were spiking, so we have, we are holding that in January. Priority number 11, board training and professional development. Uh, we had the presentation, the city's diversity inclusion initiatives, initiatives to council. We had the update from our liability carrier, MM RMA, on the city's current beach safety plan in terms of liability risk. Uh, we also had diversity training and implicit bias, that should be scheduled when COVID, uh, decreases to, uh, to a level that we can get together with, um, the trainer. Um, also we had mandatory training held for planning commissions, zoning board of appeals this spring. Uh, they were held in May and June respectively by the Michigan Association of Planners. And this is our new requirement, um, that's required by redevelopment-ready community. That's showing that these boards and commissions that do so much, that are actually functions, that are functioned by law, actually get the training that they need to make those decisions. So that'll be an ongoing training protocol going forward. Fiscal year priority number 12, development of community vision statement. Uh, we've received a various number of samples about mission vision statements from other communities and we've brainstormed in some ideas about what that could mean at a leadership retreat with council once COVID cases go back down. So we'll really, uh, we'll be doing some homework, so that when we are, have the ability to meet in private person, we'll be doing that with the council together. So for department updates, the building department, which includes zoning and building, issued, um, quite a number of permits this year. Uh, we're looking at six commercial accessory structures, residential structures, accessory were 35. Residential decks were 28. Uh, residential add and alternate repair 22, four defense permits, uh, five demolition permits and seven dock seawall, dock pilings and seawalls. And you can see the fees that were collected. Total number of permits that were issued were 379. One thing to look at was that the number of residential single-family new construction were 63 permits issued this year. Uh, residential additions were 11 and residential alter repair 63. And you can see the permit fields, fees that were collected. For the city clerk, city clerk, we had, Travis had 39 FOIA requests for the year to date. And here are our voter statistics for 2020. For March 10th, we had a little over 12, 1,200 voters. Same for August 4th and then in November 3rd, we have 2,589 voters who turned out. And you can see our absentee ballots were 420 issued, 392 received for March 10th. For August 4th, 985 issued, 815 received. And for November, November 3rd, 1,729 issued, 1,637 received. So quite a few people reaching out and getting, uh, giving the vote. Either, either coming in person or turning in their absentee. As you can see, this was a banner year for absentee ballots. Quite a big jump in numbers. Finance Department, we have some expenses by fund and I think Michelle's on it. If Michelle wants to go through some of these numbers, Michelle, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, thank you, Kate. I have a few slides here tonight. Um, these are reports that we have to, have to do for the state, it's for state revenue sharing. And it gives us a good breakdown on some of our numbers. There's also more reports out on the city website under the finance department. If you want to get more information that the state has us provide for the public. We did just finish our audit for our fiscal year end, June 30th, 2020. And these are going to cover some of those numbers. The first slide is on the expenses by fund. These are on our governmental funds and it breaks down from like the police and fire, roads, health and welfare. So you can see the change from 2019 fiscal year end to our 2020 fiscal year end. Some of the biggest changes there, when you see the capital outlay and roads, that has to do with the Center Street project. Slide two, please. This slide is breaking down just the 2020 expenses. So you can see where we spend the majority of our money. 26% for police and fire, 21% on capital outlay, 16% of roads. And then going on down, breaking them all down. Next slide. This slide is our revenues by fund. It's also the 2019 comparison to 2020. So our largest revenues are on the taxes. On the state government, you see a large increase and that also has to do with money coming from the Center Street that we got in grant money and loans. And then our next slide will be a breakdown of the 2020 revenues. So taxes make up 53%, state government makes up 21% and then a breakdown that are smaller revenue sources. And our final slide is from our taxes, is the 2019 taxes that were collected in the fiscal year ending 6/30/2020. This shows the amount of taxes collected on our tax roll for the counties, the city of South Haven, for or, and then we also collect for senior services and the South Haven Memorial Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Human resources and payroll, I know Kim's on here. I know that we had quite a bit of new positions to fill. And Kim, do you want to jump on in here and kind of explain some of the things we've worked on?
Sure, um, one thing that I'd like to note is that we had quite a few positions that were posted this year. We had 24 in total, but something that was, um, pretty interesting was that six of those positions were leadership positions. So you're talking city manager, assistant city manager, zoning administrator, wastewater treatment superintendent, electric superintendent and the marina manager. So we brought on a lot of new leaders this year as well. So, uh, 22 of the positions have been filled for the year. Seven of the positions were filled internally and 15 were filled externally. And some of those positions did require multiple hires, so like our seasonal parks, bridge tenders and dock hands. We do have two positions currently open, but we are in the process of getting those filled. Excuse me. Um, we did oversee the acquisition of Marina staff this year. So as you know, we brought them on, they are now considered city of South Haven employees. And so when we brought them on, there were six employees that we brought on and then we hired additional dock hands throughout the year. Currently, we have 87 employees, 77 of which are full-time and 10 are part-time. This slide does say that there's no seasonal staff employed at the This slide does say that there's no seasonal staff employed at this time, but um things changed quickly. With the ice rink opening up, we are actually bringing back two of our seasonal staff members to help to. Oversee the operations of the ice rink. So we are very fortunate to have great seasonal staff who are ready to jump in very quickly to help us out with that. But we do typically hire about twenty-five seasonal staff each year between March and November. That's going to be your bridge tenders. Again, seasonal parks, dock hands, beach parking, things like that. Hey, if you can go to the next slide. We've been very busy too, besides just hiring folks, process improvements. We did implement online job posting, so people can use their mobile phone to apply for positions, see what we have available. We're able to track people that have applied. This has greatly reduced the paper that we use. And so that's been a great. Addition to our processes. We are in the process right now of implementing a timekeeping system. All of our departments had different methods of tracking their time and attendance, mostly paper. I tracked it one day when we ran the payroll, we actually printed off five hundred pieces of paper. So we were doing that bi-weekly, five hundred sheets of paper. This new timekeeping system is going to eliminate that. People will be able to request time off using their phone. They can do it from a laptop. Our folks over at DPW will be able to clock in and out using a time clock like they currently do. So we're right now, we're testing. We want to make sure everything's good before we go live in January. We also developed probably close to a hundred standard, standard operating processes for the HR and payroll department. This is in case anything happens to me or the payroll assistant will just have good backup for how we do things. As we previously spoke about earlier this year, we rolled out blind hiring to increase diversity in our staff. And something that's been kind of fun, especially since we brought on six new leaders this year, we create a new leader onboarding program. We do a great job of promoting from within, but we want to make sure that when we bring somebody up, that they have the tools necessary to be able to be not just a manager, but a leader. Earlier this year presented a training and on workplace injury. So what should leaders do if one of their employees gets hurt? And of course, we spent a lot of time on the COVID preparedness and response plan. Developing it, revising it multiple times and rolling that out to staff. And then finally, in January of this year, there were new regulations that if an employee has a CDL, commercial driver's license. And they work for us, we have to enroll them in a drug and alcohol clearinghouse program, which just basically means we're doing us. A query to see if they've had any type of drug offense and then would they be eligible to even hold a CDL? So that is something new that we rolled out this year. We had to check all of our staff and then also, you know, educate them on what this meant. So that's been a busy year in HR and payroll.
All right. Thank you, Kim. So we come to the IT, IT portion of the of the presentation and Phil is here to kind of break some of these down. IT is very critical for everything we do here and Phil and Jared have done a phenomenal job. Of making sure that we're all connected and that we have what we need. So Phil, if you're online, I'd like to have you take over and talk about your portion of this.
Sure. Well, as the slide shows, we have responded to one thousand three hundred and thirty-three requests for service. All of the departments respond or call to us whenever they have an issue, we answer the phone and we address it. So that comes out to about five or so tickets a day and that's on top of the other projects that we handle along the way. Go ahead. Next slide, please. This is what we have is a breakdown of our endpoints. You have the two of us that are maintaining about eight hundred pieces of equipment around the city. It's roughly. Hundred and fifty or so computers broken down by sixty-one laptops or eighty-nine and eighty-nine desktops. You can see one hundred and thirty-one monitors, lots of cell phones that are out there. We just issued cell phones to all of the DPW leadership. And okay, next slide. And we handle assets around nineteen locations in the city. I know oftentimes we're seen around city hall often, but we are out driving around hitting all of these places. All the parks have various cameras and things of the electric substations or places that people don't think about. We have infrastructure out there. Of course, the marinas and all of our downtown wireless. So we get a chance to get out and see everyone, which is a great perk of the job. Next slide. Some big things that we did this year is for the first time in five and a half years, all of the IT work that's being done is done in-house. Previously, we had a maintenance contract with a company called C Ken Technologies. They were bought out and when they did that, we decided that the business practices just didn't meet what we were really looking for. And so mutually, we terminated that agreement. So it is all on our shoulders at this point. We've done a ton of security enhancements and one of those things that we're doing is we have teamed up with the multi-state information sharing and analysis center. They are on, have an ability to monitor our network and see any type of. Bad traffic that might be going on and they can alert us to all of that. Tons of server enhancements. We have virtualized almost everything. We went from two physical servers to five physical servers. Email and software. We went to Microsoft products. So all of our stuff is now housed online rather than in-house. Lots of Wi-Fi and fiber optic expansion. Center Street allowed us to run fiber optics all the way to both ends of the project. So. We could double the amount of access points that are in the downtown area. We also replaced all of the Wi-Fi antennas in a building in city hall and all of the other city buildings. And with online broadcasting, that was the huge one. COVID affected us just like everyone. When COVID hit, we had to. Figure out what we were going to do. And of course, all of you know, we went to. Go to meeting at first and we ran all of those meetings and now we've adopted Zoom and hopefully this is working out great moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Chief Thompson is out of the office, so I'll work with her slides here. As you know, we have nineteen officers, fourteen of them are road patrol. We have free plane. Free detectives are plainclothes officers and one administrative and one for information technology. Of our police only calls, we have three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three, average of two hundred and seventy calls per patrol officer. And as you can see, as with most things, when we we see a peaking of calls for service in June, July, especially July and August. We also have police calls with the sister shades with those were about five thousand thirty-three, which is an average of three hundred and fifty-nine calls per patrol officer. Again, June, July and August are a higher months. The amount of time officer daily activities, thirty-six percent of the time their investigation and thirty-one percent of the time they're on the vehicle patrol. Foot controls at nine percent. I know the mayor wants to see that bumped up and we will be working on that. Other are meeting reports for eleven and other duties as required. We had some recognition earlier this year. We had Sergeant Patrick Calotto that was awarded the life-saving award for his efforts this summer. Also, we had some distinguished service awards for Sergeant Adam DeBoer, Officer Kevin Wildy and Detective Brian Myers. It was a pleasure to issue those awards to those officers. Of the fiscal budget for the police department for twenty to twenty-one was two point six million dollars. Overtime was a lot at one hundred and seventeen. So you can see the breakdown of the yearly department totals of that of those of that budget. And here we come to the shades portion and I think Fire Chief Brandon Hens is on the line. Brandon, are you there? If not, I'll jump. Oh, there you are, Brandon. Yes.
Okay, sorry. Kind of doing a little bit of a hybrid. Thing here at home. Um, yeah, we've had an extremely busy year. We've had twenty-three hundred calls for EMS and fire. Close to twenty-three hundred. Right now, we're knocking on. Hold on, I gotta get my sound right here. Okay, sorry about that. We're at twenty-two hundred and eighty calls right now and. It's been extremely busy. We actually had a couple of slow. Months when COVID hit in March and April, but we've caught right back up and. But it's been. A little bit of everything, water-related rescues. EMS calls, of course, fire calls and but all in all, it's been a great year. We have a great staff. I I can't say enough about them. We can. We've been able to cover everything as busy as we are and we're extremely fortunate to have them. We were get visited by Governor Whitmer a couple of months ago, as you most, most of all of you know. Our paid-on-call staff were outfitted with water safety equipment that was. Purchased with a donation from Elvin Marl. And we've had other donations as well. We've had donations from Meyer. They've actually donated. To us again, we have yet to receive the check, but. We're thinking to different things that we're going to do with that. And we had our two EMS response bicycles purchased a little bit later in the year due to. Supplies being a little short due to COVID, but. We are, we were able to get them on a little bit before the weather got got bad.
Okay.
In, as most of you know as well, Ron Wise retired. He was the chief of Shays for thirteen years, I believe. Was a member of the department for thirty-one years and. He was very instrumental in helping me with this transition. And I thank him for that. Our captain, one of our longtime captains, Ron Ridley was named firefighter of the year. Solid guy. I'm sure most of you have seen him around or on calls. We did hire a new firefighter paramedic this year, Tim Forker. And we also have, we're also actually just today, we started a new assistant inspector to assist with short-term rentals. And and building inspections downtown. And we did lose a couple, couple of our retired firefighters are Stanley, Stanley Wakefield and Tom Leva. Tom Leva was with the department for twenty-five years as a paid-on-call firefighter paramedic. Stanley Wakefield actually started with South Haven Fire Department. And was chief for a time and then came back to Shays later on as a paid-on-call.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I know that you guys have been very busy with the account, with the call volume that you've had. So thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you.
And so that pretty much wraps up our, the end of the year report for the council. I will stop the screen share here and see if you can get back to here. Were there any questions from the council on any of the information presented?
Yes, Kim, I mean, Kate, I do have a couple of questions on some of the information. I wanted to know. What is the ableism training?
Ableism training is was was it's with disability networks and that's so for for all of us to not presume on how to. To offer services to people with lesser with other abilities. So handicap folks. Not seeing their handicap, actually seeing the person and seeing how we can best meet their their needs for service.
Gotcha.
Name training that we had with disability networks.
Okay. And then my last thing was, how effective is the blind hiring going so far?
I think it's really changed the way that we have hired. I think that if Kim's on the on the line, I think Kim would like to jump in here, but. What he has done is we look at qualifications right away. So we take out address. And we take out any other qual, any kind of. Things that you would, you would maybe, I guess, identify a person. So we are looking at just their qualifications. And what city they're from. And that's a good way for us to kind of raise any kind of implicit bias by the hiring committee.
So would you say that, well, I guess this would be to Kim, would you say that that has helped increase or diversify the hiring?
We implemented that, I believe in June, and I'd have to go back and see how many positions had been filled since then. I know first positions that we did put out was for. Once it was a meter reader or an equipment operator position. And for that position, we did end up making the offer to a gentleman who was black and unfortunately, he turned us down. He, I think he got a better offer from his current employer and that happens sometimes. But so, yes, I do feel like it is helping.
So so far it only is increased it by one person. You offer one minority or one black person a job so far?
No, that's not the only person of color.
Maybe I just misunderstood. Okay. All right. I just want to know if it's effective.
I think it has been very effective.
Okay.
And we're still early in the process too. It's only been rolled out for a couple of months, for a few months.
All right. Thank you.
There you go. George, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the assistant city manager spot, how that effort is going to fill that spot?
Well, we have completed our first and second round of interviews and we are hoping to hear back. We're hoping to make an announcement here before the end of the year. And as for the city clerk, the city clerk will be presented at the next council.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I'll jump in. I just want to say one good presentation I'm still a fan of. I know we we changed it back a couple of years ago to. Make this prayer the kind of focus on the priorities, which it's nice to see them. Especially like the dollar bill analysis with the breakouts. I think that's super effective and. We'll have to continue to share that, I think, with our taxpayers as we all just got our tax pills in the last few weeks. It's nice to know where the dollars go. So I think. That's the only questions I've got on that one. So Kate, if there's nothing else. We can probably hold off and we'll be getting public comments next. So if they've got questions, they can. Throw them out then. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, that would be fine. I again, if you have the web link, just go ahead and push the raise your hand icon or dial star nine. To be acknowledged. And it looks like we do have one person with their hand up, sir.
Perfect. All right. So we're at that time for citizens in the audience will be heard and. Who's up first?
We have Rosalie Pocati and I've asked her to unmute.
Good evening, Rosalie.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly, yes.
Okay, good. Well, first of all, happy holidays, everybody. I really enjoyed the recap of the city. Congratulations. But I saw absolutely no report on short-term rentals and actually that's what I'm talking about tonight. I'm following up on the January, February meetings that were held regarding short-term rentals. And the erroneous numbers used for the denominator of the single-family homes. We used census data that included by mistake, state and federally funded apartments, housing commission houses and senior living apartments. The bottom number was skewed for our four to one ratio. Not fixing it going into two thousand and twenty-one will result in allowing too many rentals that were never intended in the first place. And of course, we are honoring and I, we have to honor the permits that have been granted. But we may have to curtail new permits until the total reflects the true ratio. And that's probably going to have to happen by attrition. Because as of February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty, there were two thousand six hundred and two hundred. Single-family homes identified in the city of four to one to four ratio would equal four hundred and twelve business rentals allowed. And in February of this year, there were already four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty-seven permits. So what I'd like to know where we are at now. Also note, I'm not talking about personal rentals that are allowed by the ordinance. Nor am I suggesting we amend the ordinance. For now, it is working. I am suggesting we fix the number that should have been correct in the first place. It's called due diligence and it was put in the ordinance review each year. So having said all this. I would love to have a response or your thoughts on how we're proceeding.
All right, Rosalie, thank you. I guess I'll take the first shot at it. I mean, I know Kate, we can definitely come back with the report. Kate knows the, we actually are, we've been staring at those numbers again recently and we actually just need to have. Kind of go over this with the whole council. Once we get the final numbers in as far as where we're at with rental, the current short-term rental numbers as well as the total number of. The, what I'm going to say, the. Excluded or the incorrect units for the denominator. So I think it's really just a matter of, I mean, Kate, thoughts on. Bringing that to the council at an upcoming council meeting?
We can bring that whatever the council wants to look at that. I do disagree with Rosalie's answer. The that her claim that this is not a change in the ordinance. I think that this would be a change in the ordinance. The language is clear that we have to count all the dwelling units that are listed in the ordinance. So if we are looking to extract out and and exert, I'm sorry, and. And and not include certain. Dwelling units, then we're going to have to explicitly say that in the ordinance. So I think that you are talking about an ordinance amendment, but we can bring that information back to the council. I do know that January is the short-term rental month and that's when the planning commission looks at their short-term rental report. And that's when the units are set for the year. So if this is the will of the council that we look at the denominator and that we we modify that ordinance language, we can certainly bring that to the council. In January. we can certainly bring that to the council in January.
Sounds good. All right, Rosalie. So there's, there's that. Any other questions for us?
I am looking, sir. It doesn't look like anyone else has raised their hand. So again, there's a small icon that says raise your hand, or you can dial star nine if you're on a phone. And so far, it looks like we have, Gail Patterson has her hand up, so I'll ask her to unmute. Go ahead and unmute there, Gail.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry. I just wanted to follow up on City Councilwoman Wilkins' question. I heard that it was effective changes that were instituted by HR. And maybe Kim or Kate can get me the, the statistics if I could stop by to get any statistics that you have on the hiring practices of diversity, you know. So if it was effective, how, how was it effective? How many more people color or whatever guidelines that you use for diversifying the, the city workforce? I, I like to see that. I know it's a very important question that a lot of people in our community would like to find out because that it's, it's good when you institute something and, and you say it was effective. How was it effective? Do we still have the same number of minorities hired by the city as we did 20, 30 years ago, or, you know, last year or the year before? All right, I will probably get in touch with you all later to get the answer.
Okay, well, sounds good. Thank you, Gail. And I'll work to get that to you by the, not this week, because it's a very short week, but we're looking at maybe next week.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
All right, I am still looking for any hands raised, sir, and I am not seeing any.
Okay, well, that will include the public comment section. Next, we have city manager comments.
Okay, thank you. As you all know, we have been able to open the ice rink. This will be for seven days a week. This is starting actually tomorrow, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Because of our, because of the, the governor's order, we are able to do open skates, and that allows us to have 20 people on the ice at one time. So we will have an ice rink attendant down there to help make sure the flow is going well and that people are, we are in compliance with the governor's, I'm sorry, with the NDHS order. Again, no concessions or skate rentals. So if you have your own skates, that's, that's the best. There will be no concessions, as I said. So just know that that's our limitations with that, but we are able to open the ice rink. I wanted to give a big shout out to the city staff, everybody who helped put this presentation together. We've been collecting a lot of this data since January. So I want to say thanks to Kim, Michelle, Brandon, Bill Hunter, Phil Poole, Travis Sullivan. I can't do it without them. I can't tell you enough how wonderful this team works together. So thank you very much to the leadership team. And I also wanted to thank everyone here, city council, everybody who's watching. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope everyone stays safe.
Perfect. Thanks, Kate. Yeah, I'll agree with you. Excellent work on part of the staff, and and Phil can attest, those IT phone calls are not me calling for support. Just so you know, I'm not that bad on my computer anymore, so. I do appreciate them. All right, let's go to councilperson comments. I'll start up top. Ms. Letitia, I see you up there. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you too, Mayor Scott.
And Christmas break for you.
The same thing. I have a couple of comments. One comment I did, I was hoping that the chief was going to be here tonight because I had a question about something I saw over the weekend. I saw a high-speed chase, and I couldn't quite understand why there was a high-speed chase leaving the Myers parking lot. I think that was very dangerous. Apparently, the person stole something out of the store, but I could not understand why. They just didn't stop the person in the, in the parking lot. A high-speed chase in such a small city is very dangerous. And so I wanted to ask about that. I watched the individual flying down Phoenix Street headed towards whatever that city, Lakota. I think that's Lakota, whatever. But I, I'm just concerned about that. I thought that was very dangerous, and I didn't understand that judgment call of doing that. Um, I believe that was Friday or Saturday I saw that. And then I, I want to say I appreciate Ms., our county commissioner, Gail Gladney, making that response to my question. We all know that 2020 has been a very challenging year for all of us due to the pandemic. All the things that we've been seeing on, on the news. We've seen riots. We've seen riots of hate. We've seen violence. We've seen all type of things, but I have personally been feeling like I've been personally hoping that the city of South Haven would take or see a need to bring a change to this city. We've been saying this all year long, you know, how important diversity is. Now, my stance is this. It, it blacks, black lives need to matter, and I've gotten many comments from many people in this community about their concerns about Black Lives Matter murials, why they don't want it, and all those different, you know, all those different things. And I heard that, but my concern is that it's not about the sign. I don't have a problem with a sign, but I need black lives to matter here in the city of South Haven, especially when it comes to jobs. What do black people have to do to deserve or get a chance at getting a job in the city of South Haven? I hear a lot of talk. I've heard talk from many people in the city, but I have not, I've yet to see any changes. I've yet to see any actions. And I, I'm at the point now, I'm getting a little frustrated because I think I, I've been waiting all year long to see some changes. I have not seen anything. And yes, I would like to see some data. I, I, I mean, I just don't understand it. What do black people have to do to matter in this city, to deserve a job in this city? And I'm not talking about just any old job, a full-time job. What do black people have to do? So apparently, black people are not good enough to be hired or something. Give, I, I need an explanation. To me, to me right now, the talk is cheap. And as the mayor, as the city council, I think that we should all, I mean, how do you think black people feel? It's the same thing over and over. We keep going around this vicious circle. We went around this all in the springtime and the summertime. No change. You bring all these programs. You say you got a bliss implicit bias, bias training, but there's no change. Where is the change? So I'm looking for some change, and I think that it's time for some change. Thank you.
Thanks, Tisha. And I, I guess I'll, I'll just say, I mean, I will say, I will commend, I've heard, I mean, Kim has presented to us the things they've done to change, to make changes, including, you know, she talked to you a second ago about how they're, you know, doing the blind screening and whatnot. So I mean, I we've had the presentation on what is being done. So they are doing things, and I guess I, I want to give credit where credit is due. I do not have the stats. I mean, she's, you just mentioned one offer that was made, so we'll, we'll wait for numbers, but again, I want to give credit to Kim for what she is putting in place. So, George.
No comments tonight, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
No comment.
Mr. Chris Campbell?
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and if you can, visit some stores and restaurants downtown. They could probably use your help right now. Definitely our restaurants. It's a good time of year to visit them, sir. Thank you.
I would agree. I too, obviously, happy holidays to everybody. My, my, again, thanks to everybody here in the city council for the work you've done. The city staff, we have an amazing city staff, top to bottom. You're all amazing. I will say that. We should all continue to be diligent with COVID. Wash your hands, social distance, all that good stuff. Get your flu shots, please, and get your COVID shots. I will get mine tomorrow. So that's, that's my fun tomorrow. Remember, as Chris just mentioned, grab takeout food. Restaurants are, you know, obviously just being crushed right now. When I got a chance to visit, we are new arcade downtown. Hey, you can rent that place out for your family. If you want to do it, they'll do it on a private basis. I think you can even rent a movie screen out right now. So some options as you do that. And also, I know we have a couple educators on the council, and we just, as a community, let's be thinking about our class of 2021. We saw the project pathway, project for the class of 2020, and our class of 2021 is in an equally kind of unique spot where they haven't been together with their class in almost a year now. So I would, let's be thinking of a community, as a community, what we could do to honor the class of 2021, and obviously, we will continue to talk about this. So with that, again, happy holidays to everybody. Be safe and
Scott.
Yes.
Oh, Joe. Joe Reese, sir. I don't think you asked if I had any comments. I feel kind of left out tonight.
Sorry, Joe. I missed you. Sorry, you're, you weren't on my screen.
Just because I'm not in town, I am on here.
Sorry, Joe. Go ahead.
If I could make a couple of quick comments.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the police chief. She has been kind enough to give time and energy to come to the Ward One Action Committees twice that I know of, and I was there, and answer difficult questions and explain how the police operate and some of their procedures. And I thought it was a real eye-opener a couple of times, and I thought she did a great job, and it helped our Ward One leadership, and I think that'd be something she could even do with the public. It was a great couple of meetings. The second thing, I'm glad Rosalie brought up short-term rentals. I would just suggest that whatever we do, we should do it quickly. I thought it was unfortunate the last time we really got into short-term rentals. It got into the season of rentals. We should have all this wrapped up, I would say, no later than February. So investors, realtors, the community will be prepared before the spring comes. And the last thing, I sure hope we all in this city and this country have a better 2021, and I'm sure putting a lot of hope on this vaccine that we can get this virus behind us, and we can start living a normal life, and the city can start to prosper, especially the downtown merchants. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, sorry, you're not showing up as you, and you're, you disappeared on my screen. So sorry about that. All right. So again, happy holidays, everybody. I will, on that note, seek a motion to adjourn.
George Sleeper, I make a motion to adjourn.
Joe Reese, sir, I'll second it.
We have a motion. We have a second roll call, please.
Reese?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper? Yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Happy holidays, everybody. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Bye.